Good evening, welcome to the regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, February 6, 2020. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening, we have Mr. Mansour, Ms. Coulter, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Gelling, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Horsia, Mr. Yoncho. We have our Planning Director, and we also have our Attorney, Mr. David Mott. Next item on our agenda would be approval of the evening's agenda. Do we have any changes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve the agenda as stated.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Next item would be approval of the minutes for our regular meeting, December 5, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I have just a minor tweak to the minutes, which does not change any content, therefore I make a recommendation that we approve the meeting minutes as stated.
Motion by Mr. Banderski, support by Mr. Horsia. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Next item on our agenda is an opportunity for public comment. This section is for anything that we're not going to be having a public hearing tonight. We do have two public hearings this evening, one regarding the Mount Hope Church, and also one regarding Discount Tire. There'll be an opportunity, when those cases come up, for anyone in the public to give us their comments. But if you would like to address the Planning Commission on anything other than those two items, now would be the time. Anyone? Address, please.
Monica Shapiro, 9413 Burning Tree Drive, Grand Blank. I am the President of a group called the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid, and we spoke to you, to the Board, in May about the possibility of introducing formal building code laws to support the Complete Streets Resolution that the township signed in 2009. What we're looking for is any new construction, any improvements along any of our major roads, especially roads that are included in the non-motorized master plan, that any new building, any site approval, they have to put in a segment of a non-motorized trail when they do any kind of development in the township. We'd like to see it go to public road commission improvements as well, but certainly commercial development, and there's been a lot of incidents all through the township of buildings coming in, and some do sidewalks, some don't, some do bike paths, some don't, and we would like to see that made a complete requirement. Barring them putting in a trail, we'd like to see an escrow fund set up for trails. And I know that there was some talk when the Hilton came in on Holly Road, that they were going to contribute to a trails fund. I heard that the amount was $10,000, it was in the paper. I don't know if that fund was started, if it was named, if it was made into a policy, and that's what we are still pursuing. We want the Board to still do that, if possible, and I don't know, $10,000 is too low, that's a drop in the bucket. It wouldn't make a little segment of trail for the part that they're putting in, but it's better than nothing, and it could be used, if it's in a trail fund, it could be used for trail planning on other parts where we're, or matching funds, or whatever, any place we're trying to put trails in in the town. So, I'm just wondering if there's been any progress on considering that by your Board.
Lloyd, did you have any comment?
I can comment that this is one of the items that is being looked at and discussed through the master planning process, which is where and how we establish our policies for these kinds of land use things. Matter of fact, I saw a language today that referenced that, so it's in there, and it appears as though we're getting feedback from the community, from the surveys. My glimpse of that today showed that same level of interest, so that would be something that the Commission and the Board will be looking at when we adopt our goals and objectives for the master plan. So that's how that would evolve, is based on the interest that the community shows and the desire of the Board and the Commission to do those things.
But, we did sign the Complete Streets Resolution, and we've never made it a policy in all these years. Is there any, when does it go from being something that we want, that's in the master plan with all those trails and an assigned Complete Streets Resolution, when does it go from there to being official policy that it's set in stone, you have to do it if you're going to do business in Grand Blank?
Yeah, that would need to be determined based on how we proceed with the master plan. That would need to be an official adopted policy.
Right, an adopted policy.
And so, as we look at the master plan, and comments, and the interests that the community is showing in those regards, those will be things that we look at.
What timeframe can you give me?
I think by June, we'll have the plan adopted.
And when the plan's adopted, that policy might be a page of the plan, it would be a part of the plan, the implementation of the non-motorized plan?
How much of this conversation do you want us to have this evening?
One little response, and then we need to move on.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
It would be referenced in the plan, and more than likely, the plan would reference the fact that we would need to either look at and go through the existing resolution that you're referencing, or go through and do a further study to see where and how we fit, and determine what kind of trails, if you will, and non-motorized transportation the township itself is interested in, as opposed to the greater regional plan that was referenced and adopted before, as you said.
Thank you. Just for the audience's benefit, we typically don't respond to comments raised at the public hearings. Tonight was kind of an exception, but nonetheless, if somebody else comes up, and tonight, we would give them the courtesy of responding, because we did here, but typically, we don't do that, because it tends to prolong the issue, especially if there are several people that want to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Banderski. Is there anyone else who wants to address the Planning Commission after hearing that?
If not, we will close the public hearing.
Town end portion, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. We have a couple of items, actually three, planning and zoning news in our possession. One of them has an article on aging in place, another one regarding an update on marijuana, and it says, "Reality Sets In," so good read on both of those. That brings us to old business, which would be master plan. Mr. Boyd, you have any updates for us?
Well, we are moving along. I gave you a little bit of some insight on some of the information that we've seen. We did have a Steering Committee meeting earlier this evening, talked about the centers. I did my review, gave it to Leah. There were a couple of folks unable to attend, but we did have a pretty good group over there, I noticed. And I would need to, and Mr. Mansour, is there anything from that meeting that you would want to convey?
No, just a quick update. So, the bulk of the meeting was centered around the section of the plan called Centers and Special Focus Areas. So these are a group of, I think, five or six areas that the Steering Committee has identified as kind of focus areas for us to look at around the township, places where we could actually build some themes around, et cetera. So that was really the bulk of the discussion tonight. We had some very good input from some people from outside of the county, talking about, you know, their experiences, and maybe giving us some thought starters for that, for centers. Thank you.
What's the next step going on with the master plan?
Well, the next step will be our next Steering Committee, you know, writing up those sections. This next portion, though, we should be unveiling a lot more of the survey data, so we'll start, you know, disseminating that, and pushing that out a little bit, and learning what it is, and what we're going to do with it. So that will start to get a lot more interesting in that regard. I think we are kind of putting some of the finishing touches on these draft sections that we're working on. They've been reviewed, they've been reviewed twice, and then they're, you know, kind of set aside. We will all have another opportunity to take another look at them, of course, and of course, the entire Planning Commission will, and then of course, the Board, and then of course, the entire community. So it's not over. There's a lot of exposure of this document, and opportunity for folks to get involved. There'll be open houses, workshops, two or three of those at least, and then of course, the public hearing process for the adoption. So it's going to be pretty extensive, and we've got, I'd say, four more months. I think my June timeframe is probably about right.
Excuse me. Mr. Mansour? Yes. I wonder if we could have some thoughts around if we are going to wait for, I guess, all these sections to be complete before engaging a greater part of the public, or are we planning to kind of say, okay, here's a draft of the first half, and then go out? I mean, is there thoughts around that?
I can tell you how it usually goes, and that is, we complete the draft, it's completed, and then we identify the fact that it's available, and allow people to, and now, when you think about being able to access it online, you know, it is pretty convenient, but that is how it typically goes.
Thank you.
Mr. Banderski?
The Goodrich Community is going through the same thing. They're doing surveys and everything else. Has there been any consideration to have any cross-talk before we get to the final drafts? Any value to that?
I love the idea. What kind of thoughts do you have?
Well, I mean, what they're finding from their community, in terms of their surveys, is there anything revealing in that that they didn't comprehend, which we might have to consider?
I'll let them know that, we'll show them ours, and they'll show us theirs, kind of the thing, how's that?
Okay.
Okay, I'll give them a call. I think that's a great idea. I love the idea of doing that.
Thank you.
Anything else regarding the master plan?
No, sir.
Next item would be new business. Item A on our agenda is Mount Hope Church. We're considering both a special land use and site plan review. Someone wants to come up and give us a brief presentation to the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chris Ely with Triumph Engineering Design. This is Jim Trabergian with Triumph as well. We've done the design on this proposed addition. It's a about a 5,200 square foot addition to the existing church for use by the church for classrooms, nurseries, things of that nature, for church use only, for Sunday schools, Bible classes, there's no intended use for any outside daycares, or schooling, or anything of that nature.
This is a proposed addition?
Yeah. That's essentially set off the rear of the church as the existing church lies, so...
For everybody, I think this is an important point, and I don't mean to jump in, but I think, since you mentioned it's at the rear of the church, the one point I would want to raise and bring to everyone's attention is, if you, there is no place from a public location, the public street, or wherever, that you would even see this building, and I think that that's a point that's worth making, because the material isn't, you know, the same as what's on the front of some of the other portions of the building, and so I think that just becomes an important point to raise at that building, and you can see it from this plan, is not visible from the street, or any public piece of property.
That's not our negative, that's...
It's a very good thing.
Sure. Anyone else?
No, it's pretty straightforward, so open to any questions.
The initial questions, the public? The public has any comment regarding this? As we mentioned, it's an opportunity. Part of it is, there's a special land use that's required, because it's a church in a residentially zoned area. They currently have the special land use, this would be an extension of that.
It's an amendment to the existing special land use. Yes, sir.
So, I'll open up to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding what they've heard or seen so far? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. We did see this addition at site plan level, we had a few comments for them. Mark, do you have the elevation? The Discount Tire.
Sorry, a lot of everything else, it looks like. Let me go find it. Oh, here we go, sorry. There.
Yeah, I know, I drove by there.
Is there one in particular you want to zoom in? These aren't in color, so they're kind of hard to see. Was there one that you wanted to point anything out, or?
No, there's...
This one has some, can show, it shows you, yeah.
It shows the proposed building addition, it's got a...
There you go.
You've got a slope roof, metal panel walls, you've got some banding on there.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that we did suggest at the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, at Site Plan Review meeting, was provide a masonry knee wall to help with future maintenance, I guess, if it doesn't get damaged.
Sure.
Maintenance operations. We weren't sure whether there was a trash enclosure on the site, there appears, maybe there are some...
Right, I think, good.
From the church, like that, not like a mall.
Okay.
We had a question about that, whether there was dumpsters on site, and if they're going to be, they need to be in an enclosure that complies with the township requirements. And the only other comment was, they needed to come to the Planning Commission, which is the reason they're here, to obtain the special land use.
Right.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Banderski?
I might just comment for the audience. If you're not aware, the Site Plan Review, three of the current members sitting on the Planning Commission are members of that site plan, so we spent quite a bit of time going through this in detail. So, sitting up here, if there aren't a lot of comments, three of us have made several of those to the submitters, so I just want you to be aware of that. It isn't a, we're not here to rubber stamp anything.
So did you have follow-up comments, or someone have a comment regarding the dumpster?
My name is Dan Morrison, I'm the Lead Associate at the church. Apparently, maybe y'all had some older photographs, but we do have a dumpster, and right now it has a wooden fence around it with a gate. The photograph's a couple days old. Oh, it is? Yes, so...
It was from a distance away, it was hard to see.
Okay, yeah, so, but if we need to comply with the updated masonry wall, we can sure comply with that, but right now, it's a nice weathered wooden fence around it.
If you come in and talk to Mark, he can go through and show you what the ordinance requires, and just see whether you comply, or if you need to make some modifications.
And we're willing to do the wall as well, so...
So that, sir, if I might, that would need to be a condition for the approval this evening, not just to come in, but also to bring the dumpster enclosure into compliance, I think would be a good way to phrase it.
Well, okay, and that's actually on the Site Plan Review, one of the comments, it says, "Provide trash enclosure for dumpsters if used on site." Enclosure compliant with township ordinance requirements. Perfect. We captured it right today.
Very good, thank you.
I'm just curious, with your cross-section on this, is this a prefabbed law section?
Nope, it's a stick-built steel structure with light-age metal roof trusses, scissor and, combination of scissor and traditional, kind of more of the exterior view than cut-through, there are some machines that do show that, but it's a, you know, steel structure is the main structure system.
Metal truss system.
Mr. Mansour?
So, apparently on the east side of this is a residential area, which would, I guess, which would face, residential would face this particular new building. Is it, is the elevation of that, I guess, consistent with what the, you know, residential, you know, the people in the residences, or is it, are there trees between them, or how does it look?
The property is huge. It's 50, almost 50 acres, and it's hundreds of feet from any residential...
It's tree-lined anyway.
Yeah, it's got a forest over there, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else in the Planning Commission? We have two things to take into consideration, one is the special land use, and the final site plan review. What we did at, I guess, no, we, at Site Plan Review, we granted preliminary and final site plan with the conditions that we listed. Planning Commission have any other items they've seen that we need to take into consideration or amend the site plan review?
If I might, sir, I'm not sure that I heard a resolution to, and I may be jumping the gun, to the utilization of the knee wall on the building. I'm sorry, I don't remember if that was resolved between you guys on the discussion.
We had included in our site plan comment to provide masonry knee wall about...
So it's on there.
Metal channel, we suggested three-foot, four-high metal.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you. That way, for the benefit of everybody, then that building is much more consistent with the remainder of the building, if you incorporate that knee wall, because the rest of the building does have that around it primarily, so it'll add an aesthetic value.
So is it appropriate for me to make a motion at this point, to approve the Site Plan Review and the Special Land Use 2001 and 1062, respectively, along with the amendments from the Site Plan Review Committee?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Do them together, it's fine. Support. Motion by Mr. Mansour, support by Mr. Yoncho. Any further discussion? Out of vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm good with that.
Next item on our agenda...
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is Discount Tire. Give us a full review of what you plan to do.
Excuse me, Chairman Gelling?
Yes.
I just want to disclose that I have a family relationship with the person representing the seller, so if the Planning Commission wants me to recuse myself from the voting here, just want to make that offer.
Laddie?
You feel that you could objectively proceed with the business at hand, and it's not going to cause any issue for you?
Just want to disclose that.
Yeah, I think unless anybody on the Commission objects, I think he's made his declaration. He said it's not going to cause any issue for him, decision-wise. Again, unless somebody objects, you're good to go.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
All right, well, good evening. My name's Ryan Mack, and I'm with ENG. We are consulting engineers for Discount Tire. We work for Discount Tire on all their stores in Michigan with them. So this particular site, we do have roughly an 8,000-square-foot building, have a glass showroom that's on Saginaw Street side, and then we have three overhead doors, six service bays. Within the building, there is a dead tire storage area, so all the dead tires that are generated are stored inside the building. They also have an extensive racking system for all the new tires, so that they also, with that racking system, they have a lower level, and they also have a mezzanine level, so everything's stored internally, inside the building. The store operates Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., are their typical hours. Cars are not allowed to be left overnight, so when a vehicle comes, they usually service that same day, and then the vehicles are gone by the end of the day. There is no storage of any type of hazardous material. Discount Tire just does tire and wheel sales. They don't do oil changes, they don't do anything of that nature. They strictly sell tires and wheels. So as far as the site layout goes, we do have a rather large aisleway between the bay doors and that first row parking. We have a 15-foot concrete apron, then we have a 35-foot aisleway. That is a Discount Tire standard, those dimensions. It's primarily put in place for a safety standpoint. We obviously have cars that are backing in and out of the service bays themselves. That activity only occurs with a Discount Tire employee guiding those vehicles in and out, but we also have the through traffic, obviously, going in each direction, so that's kind of the standard that they've set for those dimensions. Another new, I guess, element that Discount Tire has just implemented to try to avoid congestion near the service bays is, the rationale for that excess drive around the rear of the building is to accommodate air checks. It's something where, you know, if folks come in, they can get their tires pumped up to the specified air pressures, and so, in order to alleviate congestion in front of a building, they've added this excess drive around the rear, so that they can queue vehicles there, if need be, and it doesn't interfere with operations in front of you the building. And then, we also, a lot of what dictates our site layouts on these Discount Tire projects is the ability for trucks to maneuver. They do use single-unit vehicles, but a lot of times, they do use the interstate trucks to come in. Deliveries are usually once a week, sometimes during peak periods, there may be two trips that these trucks would come in, and we try to accommodate that turn movement that kind of necessitated the need for the openings on the Saginaw Street. The site really just doesn't accommodate the truck turning movement with only the one access out to Case Avenue. So we're proposing that right in, right out on Saginaw Street there. Obviously, we know that left turns on the Saginaw would be an issue, so that's why we went with that right turn, right out. We are adding and extending that sidewalk along Saginaw Street as well, as part of the project. So all utilities are available to us at the site. We do have to extend across Saginaw Street to be able to connect into the larger diameter 12-inch water main on Saginaw Street, because the 6-inch on Case Avenue just isn't adequate to provide the level of fire suppression that is needed for Discount Tire. We are proposing an underground stormwater detention system. Currently, the site does not have a detention system, so we see that as a significant improvement from a stormwater perspective. And I am available to answer any questions that the Board might have.
Lloyd, did you want to put up the building elevation?
Sure.
Have a brief description of that?
You bet. Let me, let me just go ahead, I'll zoom in on a portion of it, just so we can see it a little better. About those two, those are the larger elevations. Well, let me start here. The elevation that, up at the top right, that says Discount Tire, that would be the elevation facing Saginaw Street. That is the showroom and lobby area for customers. The elevation that's directly below that, that's the elevation facing towards that backside of the site that has the drive aisle around it, and then the elevation that is at the bottom, that has some of the storefront in there on the left side, as well as the Discount Tire sign on it, is the park facing Case Street, or the parking lot. The material that they're proposing includes primarily CMU, which is a split-face block, it's an attractive block, but an idea that... It's an attractive block, but an idea that came up was, instead of the full-scale split-face blocks that's proposed here, maybe break those down into the half-size, because that gives you more of an appearance of a brick exterior. This, this material is, is quite attractive on its own, but I think bringing that smaller scale of, of the product in will give it just a little enhanced appearance. I think that's a good idea. You know, color and, and material is pretty typical of, of what they do. They've got anodized window system with, they call that smoked glass in there, and then you'll, you'll see some display through there. That's it. The, the equipment sits on the roof and is hidden behind the parapet. So, you know, for all in all, the site building would generally look like that, and all the other ones you've seen, it's pretty, pretty textbook. It's standard kind of a building.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Yeah. Okay. Could you review again, one more time, the water detention proposal or how that works?
Sure.
Yeah, so currently, the site kind of sheet flows towards Case Avenue, the Case Avenue and Saginaw Road intersection right now. So, what we do is, we'd have an enclosed system, and then currently, our plan is to have a series of thirty-six inch pipes.
Underground.
Underground.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman?
Ms. Golda.
Yeah, I have a question to Mr. Lloyd and then probably to the applicant in regard to the parking requirements, because your report indicates that under our zoning ordinance, twenty-seven parking spaces are required, and they're asking for forty-two spaces. I know there is a provision in the ordinance that does allow us to approve, like, additional parking spaces up to twenty percent beyond what the ordinance requires, which would be, if it's twenty-seven, and maybe an extra six spaces, but the burden is on the applicant to justify the additional parking. So, does my question, is, am I correct on that?
You are. And, and we did have that discussion.
Okay.
I think he's best to answer that.
Yeah, thanks. So, typically, Discount Tire tries to shoot for forty-five to fifty spaces. And, and what I was, was mentioning to Mark in the, in the meeting prior was, we have been doing, I've probably done six to eight parking lot expansion projects in Michigan, just because there's not enough parking to handle, and especially in the peak demand periods, November to January, where people are getting winter tires put on. Also, take into account that during peak periods of operation, there's going to be seventeen employees at one time that could be working at the facility. So, forty-five to fifty is typically what they strive for. We have put together, when we were putting in a new score, a new Discount Tire store in Scioto Township near Aaron Harbor, we, we put together an entire sheet of the number of parking spots for all their stores in Michigan to try to give a background for why we, we requested that amount.
I mean, in, in your experience with, like, the other, I assume this is kind of a standard plan for Discount Tire? So, in your experience, are there periods where, you know, all the spaces are pretty much all occupied, or is it just a very unusual situation where you might actually run out of parking spaces?
So, I think Saturday morning is, is a time, I mean, I just go by the one locally to me, and it's always filled up on a Saturday morning. So, and like I said, in the peak period, so, you know, and the thing is, if, if you're driving to get your, your tires done, you drive by Discount Tire and all the parking lots are full, you're just going to go the next door, so.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yoncho?
Have, have we discussed where and what type of signage might be included? Is, is additional signage allowed beyond what's on the building?
During site plan review, I'll go through the comments here that we made, but one of the comments is that that's under a separate permit, so we have to comply with the ordinance or they'd have to get, you know, the planning commissioner's site plan, other than just to say.
The reason I bring it up is because if a person is driving south on Saginaw Street and wants to turn in the Discount Tire and sees the building and sees the sign on the building, there's no safe way for them to turn in to the building. It's, you can't, you don't know that there's an entrance on Case Avenue. You see the entrance to the store from Saginaw Street, but that reverse radius would make it very difficult to enter or hazardous.
Yeah, what you're seeing here is proposed by the applicant. They need to get county approval. We've mentioned that to them, and there have been some of these designs that have been denied in the past, and we suggested they focus on getting that early on in their process to understand and know that we're going to be okay with that county road commission.
Saying the county road commission would be okay with this design?
I'm not saying that, no. It's up to them.
That's the point, I think, if I might, is we were concerned that the county has declined previous requests for similar kind of circumstances on Saginaw. And so, recommendation was to make sure that they get with the county to ensure that that can, if it's a, if it's a deal breaker for the design of the project, it was a deal breaker for the design of a project on Saginaw, so it went from a, an auto store to a retail store.
I've encountered that recently, that same situation at Well Bridge of Grand Blank on Baldwin Road entrance. If you're eastbound on Baldwin Road, it's very, it's impossible to safely turn in to-
You're not supposed to.
The Well Bridge. There's no signage to indicate that.
No, there isn't. I know you're right.
And that's why I brought up the signage aspect.
Signage, I would presume, would be addressed as part of that as well, no left turn?
Sure.
But I would think that not allowing a left turn, it might be preferable for the applicant to have, follow the path for the right-hand turn into northbound Saginaw, but make the inlet a parallel radii to the outbound radius.
Typically defer to the county road commission. We figure that they've got the experts, so we'll let them take a look.
Thank you.
Good point, though.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else on the planning commission before we go to the public? We'll open up public comment. If there's anyone who would like to address the planning commission based on what they've seen regarding the proposed Discount Tire. Get your name and address for the record.
My name's Joel Fike. I'm from eight two oh two Northport in Grand Blank Township. Forgive me, I'm just observing your, your meeting tonight. Can you give us some landmarks? I'm not sure where you're talking about, this place is going to be.
Well, let's give you a area.
Okay, Street. Better than that. Mark can show us an aerial view.
Do you know where the Coney Island is across from?
Come on, don't steal my thunder.
He's still in this place. Get there.
Go ahead, I know it's important to you. We are, well, this is, you can see the city of Grand Blank is right in the middle there, and the rest of it is Grand Blank Township, as I zoom in, right at the very north end of, of the township, or the, of the city. See where that, I'll, I'll put the overhead on, give you a better look at it. Keep zooming in, there you go. See where that says Angel Kisses? That's the place, right there, right here. This is Saginaw, if you can see that cursor, and then that's Case, and right there is the building that'll come down and, to make room for the proposed new building. That's where it is. Does that help?
That helps.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else from public who'd like to address the planning commission? If not, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back up to the planning commission. I thought I would go through what we discussed at, some of the comments that we offered at site plan review. There are approvals, Genesee County Road Commission, Grand Commission, standard approvals that need to be obtained. Township engineer has reviewed the site plan in detail, provided some comments that need to be complied with. Yoncho brought up the signage. We did indicate signage is under separate permit, must be granted by the township, because this building is, the building itself is in the township. You did mention briefly that the site is partly in the-
Yes, sir.
-city and the township.
That's right.
We asked for an acoustic study to identify the impact of nearby residential properties, and that that report identify what the anticipated sound levels and any required mitigation. I've got a concern, because we do have some residential properties, multiply close here. Good news is, there are some existing trees that may help, location of garages and that kind of thing that may help, but sure that we understood what that impact is.
Yes, indeed.
We asked to identify hours of operation. That was mentioned, that's eight to six. We had some minor site plan, a little bit of site lighting that was spilling out off the site. We asked for them to correct that, bring that in compliance with the township ordinance. Provide a few more statistics regarding the site lighting, showing that it complies with our ordinance. And Mr. Lloyd mentioned potential use of some half-height masonry to make it look a little bit more like a brick building than a block building. One of the requirements is to obtain special land use from the full planning commission. Did any rooftop equipment need to be screened for view? And there's also a variance that would be required for distant separation from residential properties. Kind of the summary of the discussion at the site plan.
Mentioned that the city also has to prove.
Yes. Mr. Lloyd, this was scheduled to go to the city for approval.
On the seventeenth, and as I mentioned in the report, any approval that we would do, or they would do, would be contingent upon the other community approving it as well, of course. And we've shared the site plan, and we would continue to do that same thing, and I'm working with their planner. I, I think, if I could, the one thing I wanted to just point out, and you did hit on this, but I think it's an important point, and that is, with regards to the requirement for an acoustic study, an analysis, if you will, clearly with the residents being that close, we're concerned, but we think that if there are mitigation measures necessary to reduce that sound level to a point that would be acceptable, we would want to understand that, and not just understand what that material might be, like a sound wall being put up at the rear of the property, or additional landscaping throughout the parking lot, or whatever the case might be. We would still want that, that analysis to show what that reduction would be as well. So, we would be looking for a, a rather comprehensive acoustic study to show not just what the volume's going to be based on distance from the sound of a jackhammer or the pneumatic tools that they use, but also at the point of the receiver, you know, those sensitive land users out there. We want to make sure that they're giving us measurements similar to what we see here, so that if mitigation is required or necessary to be, to mitigate that sound to a certain level, then, then we'd want to know what that, what that really meant, not just, oh, we're going to put up a wall. We would like to see those numbers and understand, you know, what that really means to help that neighborhood around there. I think we have that level of, of responsibility, so we'd want to do that. And then, the other thing, I, I always ask and recommend that anytime you have something that could potentially impact a neighbor, to go out and have a conversation with those neighbors. I know that they're not local necessarily, the, the designers, but still think it's a good idea to just go knock on some doors and say, hey, we're looking at doing this, and, you know, do you think you would have any, any problems with that? Now, we do a public hearing notice, and so if there's anybody here to discuss the issues associated with the public hearing, of course, that's been called and all that good stuff. However, my point is, I think it's just good practice for them to go chat with the neighbors. It can eliminate a lot of problems, and they may have ideas that we're not coming up with. They're the ones living on the site, and so sometimes they have some of the best ideas as well. So, just some of the other thoughts.
Van Dersky?
Yeah, to that point, in the past meetings, we've had neighbors come up and support the changes being made, because the applicant went out and talked with the neighbors and explained to them. So, that has been very effective in the past that Mark is recommending.
So, I guess my question, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Golda.
Yeah, a question, Mr. Lloyd. What is the provision in our zoning ordinance about notice to adjoining property owners? Do they get individual notice, like the mail notices?
Yes, they do. They get, there's two phases of that. There is, actually, there's three. There is the physical notification, everybody within three hundred feet from the edges of the property, and then there's publication in the newspaper, and then there's posting of the public hearing notices.
Okay.
I guess from a procedural standpoint, I've got a question, because it looks like we're going to need some, we're going to want to see that acoustic study, what the impacts are before you bring the special land use.
Absolutely. That would be an obligation on our part to see that first.
So, it sounds like we can't take action on approval or denial of the special land use. You wanted to deny it, you could, right?
You, you could do either, but the recommendation would be to have this study done and to make sure that we know that if that business goes in there, that they're not going to be a problem, and that we have that figured out in advance of them going to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. I think that's critical, because I think that would be inappropriate for us to ask them to go to the ZBA and then do an acoustic study. I think doing it in this order is the correct order.
And I, I think you would also suggest that they get the road commission to sign off on-
Well, I'm suggesting that for their benefit. That's just advice that I'm giving, it's not a requirement for the township.
That's a condition of the site plan approval already.
They absolutely have to get approval from the county eventually to put that curb cut in. My point is, if it's, if it's critical for the success of that development, to have that, you know, right in from southbound traffic and right in from northbound traffic, or out, if you will, they would want to check with the, with the county on that. I think that's just good sound practice. There, and I just, it's just advice. They're going to be spending lots of money on different things, and before they get into construction drawings and all that, my recommendation is go make sure you can construct it. And it's a simple conversation, it's just a recommendation. I stick my nose in there a little bit too far maybe sometimes, but I just think it avoids a lot of problems.
Mr. Van Dersky?
To Mr. Lloyd, is it a consideration that we could make a approval of this, contention upon, review the noise?
I wouldn't ask you to do that. That just puts too much pressure on the next phase of activities. I think this body needs to see the results of that study to make an informed decision. I think that's incumbent upon this body to do that.
So, at site plan review today, we give preliminary site plan approval, which is the first one.
Yes.
And then, once we know more, they can come back for the final site.
Right. But, if I might, please, the reason that we're doing this is, we had scheduled the public hearing, so we needed to conduct this part of this at the planning commission, because folks had the ability to come out and to be at the public hearing.
So, would a motion to table be in order? And yet, we'll, in other words-
I want to defer that. I think it's appropriate, but-
I think so. We, we, we're not going to be able to table it to a date certain, I don't think, because we're, we're going to have to wait for the plans.
Yeah, we don't know how long it'll take.
Right. So, I'm thinking if you want to, you want to table it for an indefinite period to allow for certainly the receipt of the acoustic study, and then, do you want to make the contact with the road commission and other contingencies to the table? Are you not worried about that? Okay, then, then I think you could- Okay, then, then I think you could table it indefinitely for the submission of the acoustic study, and also be prepared to notice it again.
We're going to notice, absolutely.
Just to make sure everybody's got a chance to talk.
Right now, they have preliminary site plan approval.
Yes, sir.
They will need to obtain special land use and variance regarding the setback distance from the residential property.
But that, but they're not going to apply for a variance until they've gotten their special land use approval?
Yes.
Then it's going to be.
I think Mr. Lloyd has kind of laid out the process.
I think to the, to the folks in the, in the meeting room, I think we were able to explain that. Hopefully, you've done a decent job of explaining that to the public that's here as well.
Well, then we need a motion.
Yes, I just want to be clear on what the motion is.
To table, I think.
It is, to table to the next available meeting date, following the submission of the acoustic study.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Ms. Golda made a motion to table until we get the information regarding the acoustic study. With support by Mr. Horshey, looks like. Other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is committee reports. Mr. Mansour, do you have anything?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Mr. Lloyd, anything else for planning and zoning?
No, sir.
Brown is not here for zoning board of appeals. Site plan review, we've seen the two properties that you've seen this evening, the last one. So based on that, I believe that Mr. Van Dersky is making a motion.
Before I make a motion to adjourn, I'd like to make a comment in that Paula Schmidt from Grand Blank News, who has been covering our meetings for quite a while, has been reassigned, and I'd like to, you know, entertain what kind of recognition might we want to provide to her, if any, because of the, you know, her attendance with us in the site plan reviews and so forth, what might be appropriate. I personally sent her an email, you know, thanking her, but I think something from the planning commission and site plan review group would be appropriate, if you agree.
Excuse me? Just as a note, the township board did recognize Ms. Schmidt at the last meeting, I believe.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about. And I can't, I think it was, I don't know if it was a declaration or something, but, I mean, it was a presentation for her in recognition of that. If you guys, as a planning commission, want to do something additionally, you're free to do that, but.
It's your choice.
I guess in my opinion, township board, county road commission, I'm okay with that action taken, but. If anybody else wants to, that's fine.
Well, then, the minimum I would suggest is maybe a card, a thank you card, that we all sign and send to her.
That'd be nice.
Okay? I'll put the card and bring it through.
For the next meeting?
Next meeting.
I think that's great. Very considerate.
With that, I would like to make the motion that we adjourn at 7:55 p.m.
That means we've got to wait another minute.
It'll take us that long to.
Motion by Mr. Van Dersky to adjourn, support by Mr. Johnson, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
It was a poll. We are adjourned, thanks. We're done. Good.